I am so glad.
I thought you were on vacation.
It's just a push of the dog.
What do you mean, the Bahamas?
No, I wish. I wish.
Yeah, that's true.
He was the next of the last.
I was.
Evening. Call for order. At this time, I'd like to do a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to all the veterans tonight. We appreciate it. At this time, we're... Can everybody hear me? We're trying to balance this thing out today. It's been on for about three hours, so we're hoping we don't have that squeal anymore. So, we're gonna redo our vice mayor's election. Apparently, we did it as a secret ballot, and that is, according to Georgia law, not permitted. To make sure that we do it correctly and everyone here in attendance knows that we're not doing anything illegal or against Georgia law. We're gonna do this as roll call. So, at this point, we're gonna make the selection. Councilperson Law, how do you vote?
I'm McCormick.
Councilperson Thrasher, how do you vote?
Dwight McCormick.
Councilperson McCormick, how do you vote?
Dwight McCormick.
That's amazing. Councilperson Crowley, how do you vote?
Gary Venable.
And Councilman Venable, how do you vote?
Jerry Venable.
Okay. Our new vice council, Vice Mayor, is Mr. McCormick. Congratulations. At this time, we need to approve the minutes. For the council minutes, December seventeen, twenty nineteen. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, McCormick has made the motion, and Councilperson Thrasher has seconded. All those in favor?
Was it...was it Haggis that seconded, or King?
Haggis.
I abstain.
Was there an issue with the minutes? I was the president for that. Oh, okay.
Okay, now, we had a special called meeting on January third. And can I get a motion for approving those minutes?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Councilman Venable made the motion, and we'll put Councilperson Crowley as the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. At this time, we'll do new business, and we have Timothy Hasper on the agenda. Apparently, he's not here tonight. So, we'll move on to the Fajita Mex Grill Maria Juantos. For your alcohol license renewal.
Yes.
We confirmed that they filed the application prior to January one, therefore, it's not treated as a new application, and according to what I've been told, everything's in order, and it's appropriate for you all to approve if you wish.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Alright, so we have Councilman Venable made the motion, Councilman McCormick seconded. All those in favor? You abstain? Okay.
I abstained on this note.
Okay. So, we have a no for Haggis, and we have Thrasher as a no. Okay. I understand that you were a little late on it, so when you do... There are people, I guess, involved with that here at the city. And just moving forward on it, if you do that, I believe in November, they probably could move along a little bit faster. I know you had made mention of that on our Thursday open forum, so just pass that along to you. Okay? So, it has carried. We also have a discussion, item three is Georgia City Week, and that's April nineteenth through the twenty-fifth. And basically, to participate in that, they provide some banners and some posters. And you can always have other things to add to it as a city. So, do we have a motion to participate in that?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Okay, so we have Councilman McCormick has made the motion, and Councilman Venable has seconded. And all in favor? And we have all in favor.
On that one, well, I know we already have it, but I'm going to Atlanta for the Georgia Cities United function from the GMA, and I'm gonna be able to get some material on the Georgia Cities Week and bring it back for the February City Council meeting. So, a lot more information on what it's about, what to do, and how to participate in the February City Council meeting.
Okay. At this time, I'm trying to introduce a moratorium on development, and I'm going to ask our council to read something on that. He highly recommends that this is something that we do. So, I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney at this point.
It's not, like, my recommendation, Mr. White's is restatement, playing director, playing the solder. But let me read through this, and I'll read for those in attendance. The resolution of the mayor and council of the city of state is to facilitate the study and improvement of the comprehensive plan, future land use map, and zoning ordinances and development regulations governing residential development in the city. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of state are in the process of reviewing and possibly modifying the comprehensive plan, including but not limited to the future land use map for the city of statum. Whereas residential development in the city will impact the economic well-being, the public health, as well as the safety and welfare of citizens. And whereas the mayor and council desire to consider the policies, regulations, and standards governing development to infer its quality residential growth in statum. And whereas the mayor and council are considering the experiences and challenges of other counties and municipalities that are experiencing the challenges of rapid growth, development of areas developed but not completed before the recession alongside newly developing areas. And whereas the city of state desires to consider recent developments in the law and in practice in the regulation of land use and laws and policies as they may be modified by changes to the city's comprehensive plan or zoning ordinance or development regulations. And whereas residential development pressures have resulted in the need to evaluate the city's policies and regulations and standards applicable to land use. And whereas the mayor and council deem it in the best interest of the city of statum that no requests or applications for annexation, zoning, rezoning, changes of conditions, variances, waivers, amendments to the land use plan, or permits for any type of building or land use activity for any residential development or construction on any land that is zoned or sought to be zoned for residential use and is larger than two acres shall be accepted by the city while the city of state is studying these experiences, challenges, and recent developments, and revises its comprehensive plan, future land use map, zoning ordinance, and development regulations. Provided the properties for which they were unfiled, completed submissions for site development plans or building permits as of January twenty-one, twenty-twenty shall be excluded from the moratorium. Whereas the mayor and council believe this process will require a minimum of six months. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the city of state do hereby resolve that the city will continue to consider revisions to its comprehensive plan, future land use map, zoning ordinance, and development regulations impacting residential growth and development. And further, that the city shall not accept any applications or requests for annexation, zoning, rezoning, changes to conditions of zoning, variances, waivers, amendments to the land use plan, or permits for any type of building or land use activity for any residential development or construction for any land that is zoned or sought to be zoned for residential use and is larger than two acres from the date of execution of this resolution through and including July thirty-one, twenty-twenty, or the date upon which the city lists the meritorium, whichever first occurs. Again, provided that properties for which they were unfiled, completed development plans, or building permits as of January twenty-one, twenty-twenty shall be excluded. Past adopt and approved is blank date of blank twenty-twenty. The...this is a standard tool used by cities and counties when they're on the cusp of development and when your consultant has identified that your zoning ordinance and your regulations may not be necessarily ready for that development. The mayor met with Jerry, I was not present at that, he may be able to provide more insight, but it is a recommendation of Mr. White's and mine. It's limited in time, and it will allow you all to do what needs to be done in order to make sure that the residential growth is coming on, through some of these larger parcels is appropriate for what you all want.
Yes, sir, I have the option.
Sure.
Should this moratorium go through? It's my understanding that this won't affect anything that's two acres or less, so people could still build a home.
You can still build individual homes on already planted lots. If you've got a two-acre, what I call is in this part of the, I don't know if you call them state lots, if you've got a two-acre lot that you want to subdivide so that you build for a child or a family member, that would not be affected by it.
I have another question. This is going to affect the...your residential subdivision over on the Moore property, am I correct? So, we're freezing any development for six months, is that...so, we can do this study?
That's correct.
Find out if our infrastructure can withstand the development, and we don't end up with any issues, you know, like other communities have ran into from overdevelopment or overgrowth or planning.
No. This doesn't particularly, specifically refer to infrastructure review, but that's probably not an idea. This has to do more with your regulations and zoning ordinance and that type of thing.
Okay.
But you can certainly do the other.
I would suggest that we take a look at our water and sewer and infrastructure and utilities. Because that's going to be impacted with the amount of homes on the table for development right now. We need...we need to take a look at.
Our rent systems, our elementary, our middle school, you know. And I've already met with the elementary principal. So, these are things that, you know, you bring in another three hundred homes. If only forty percent have kids, you're busting issues, you have highway issues, you have more kids in the schools. So, there's a lot that has to be looked at, but this is primary for what Jerry recommended till we can get all of that. In the meantime, it gives us opportunities to look at all of the other avenues to protect the city's growth.
He's done this for other cities. He's done it of all sizes, going back thirty years. He's welcomed it behind his back.
Were we planning on voting on this tonight? Because I don't remember discussing it during the work session. Generally, as a rule, we discuss things in the work session that we're gonna be voting on on the following council session as a procedure, so.
I understand your concern. It was something that was brought up with the mayor today by Mr. White. It's my recommendation. Downside risk, you don't have to downside risk, because if you don't, is that you may get a raft of applications in...before you do vote on it, in which case they would be grandfathered in, and this would not apply to them.
Well, I might make a suggestion, just to play it safe, that we table it till next month and make the first item on the agenda for next month, the moratorium.
But every development will come flooding in, and we won't, because they'll all be grandfathered in, and this is a problem. So, and we've got a hundred and seventy homes across the street. We have another twenty-eight down the road. We have a possible eighty-two up the road. And they'll all come in, and we can't say, no, we talked about this. This was a recommendation of Mark Lanning, officer, so to speak, Jerry, and Attorney Mitchell has made the recommendation. It seems short noted, but again, he's made that recommendation. He stated that if you don't vote on it tonight, in the next thirty days, you can expect a flood. And you can't do...you can't change it. You can't put the water back in the dam once you've opened it.
Yeah. So, do the developers now come through the city council for their approval? That's why I was gonna say we put it on the agenda for first.
The reason that...the reason that you put a moratorium in place is because any applications that are filed between now and where we impose a moratorium would be considered under your current ordinances and your current regulations. Those are the ones that Mr. White's recommended be revamped, because there...he had identified that there's a number of areas where the labels may say you may do this, or you may do that. Whereas what he's anticipating is a...is a set of regulations and ordinances that are more directive. And basically, say, this is the way it's going to be. And if it goes to be presented to you all, you all have some input into whether or not what he's provided to you in draft would be consistent with what your vision of the city is. Okay.
There, I have a question.
No.
So, this moratorium is for six months?
Yes, yes.
And Mr. White is going to update the comprehensive plan, the land use map, and some of the words in development regulations in the six months?
Yes, the book is about this thing. He will redo that entire book. He will redo that map. He's willing to sit down with all, any and all council members and put that comprehensive future plan together. So, we have input on it. But from that, then he'll do that map. That's a two thousand thirteen map, so not everything is up to date on that, as you can imagine. So, for that six-month period, he and I gave everyone a copy of the proposal of what he would charge the city to do. All of that in a six-month, maybe less, but guaranteed not to be more than that quote.
Another question. We can lift the moratorium early. My other issue...my other issue with this is that it's gonna kill the building season for this year. Not kill it, but it's gonna...it's gonna land July, when we...if the six months is up in July, it's gonna be three months, three to four months into the building season. So, that's gonna have an effect on the...on the homes that get completed. But, I mean, maybe they can speed it up, maybe they can step on the gas, so to speak, and we can lift it earlier. The earlier, the better, but I do wanna get...I do wanna get the study done. I just wish we had known about this more earlier, like November. But, you know, here we are. Mayor, is it possible to ask Mr. White if you make this progress? I know he's probably got a lot of things going on, but if we can...
He says he would make every effort to get this done as soon as possible. He's figuring six months. It could be less. The quote that I put on in front of everyone, that is based on that, if it's...and it can be less, he said it will not be more. It's right around sixteen thousand five and change. But with that, he will completely rewrite all of that book and provide all of the other items that we discussed. This protects the city from too fast a growth. Of Coney is a prime example of that. They brought in all of this development, they said yes to everything, and their infrastructure couldn't take it. So, we're kind of at a point, I know everybody up here probably feels like they're being fast-tracked. I took this job, elected by the officials, that citizens and I will not do anything that will haunt the city. So, to say, let's wait a month, and we get flooded with applications, and our infrastructure falls apart, then we're in the same boat as the Coney. And we can't do that.
I was just simply voicing a concern. You know, that was on the face of it, and, you know, some of our citizens might have had the same concern.
I think it ought to be voted on tonight.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't hear you.
I said I think it ought to be voted on tonight.
My question is that you say that we can accept all the towns we have water, sewage, paperboard.
For which...for which ones? You mean the... We...well, that would be part of this moratorium. There, as I understand, there's not water supply through there. There is one that skirts it. There's also some older sewer lines that skirt another side of it, but there's no new sewer lines. As I understand it, we basically would have to go to Barrow County, who has the sewer plant, and we're gonna have to find out how many more homes can we put on there? Do we have to change our agreement, for instance? I've been told verbally that, oh, we can handle it, but they're also our partners. So, we're thinking three hundred more homes. We have to go to Barrow County and say, can we put three hundred more homes on that system? And if we've got a contract with them, we may have to up that contract. So, this gives us an opportunity to work with them. The Moore properties, a hundred and seventy homes approximately, don't hold me to that number. We already have...Lakes of Statum, we're working on the final little details. They would be grandfathered in, that's approximately eighty-two homes. And then, as Attorney Mitchell said, small properties can still subdivide if they need to for family purposes And then, as Attorney Mitchell said, small properties can still subdivide if they need to for family purposes, or if they've already got their flat. That doesn't stop them. We can handle the one, two, five. It's, it's the mass that is something that we've gotta get all of our ordinances up to date and, and really be able to con, reach out to Barrow County Sewage and make sure that our water system can handle it. And this does not affect, just so it's clear, does not affect commercial or industrial development at all. Nothing in our commercial areas and nothing in the industrial park will be impacted by this at all.
Mayor, can you? I would like for us to set up a meeting with Mr. White, if this is possible, before this happens.
Forward. The planning department?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Basically, I'm, I'm gonna need, I'm gonna need to bring this to a vote and also consider putting Mr. White on a contract. And then, we can talk to him about moving forward with this. So, those would be the two things that I would be asking the council tonight. Jerry White.
Jimmy Y. White.
He has done, he has done extensive work for other municipalities, but he has been under contract with Stateum for several other things as well. Pretty much on an hourly basis, but this would not put him on a full-time contract. This would be to fulfill an obligation to us under this contract, and I'm asking to expedite it by all means.
Based on the nature of, of what we're talking about, and based on the fact that I have enough clarification, I, I feel confident in moving forward, and I would, I would make the motion that we, that we move and accept.